Ready.
Call the meeting of the Selma Planning Commission to order at 6:05 PM. The, in the Selma City Council Chamber, 1710 Tucker Street, Selma, California. Teleconference phone number 301-715-8592. Webinar ID 88318049306. When on the phone, if you wish to address the commission during public comment portion of the agenda, press star nine to raise your hand, and we will select you from the meeting queue. Press star six to unmute and mute yourself. Do we want to start with the swearing in first? Okay. At this time, we will be swearing in our two new commissioners. Commissioner Doug Kessler and Betty Standridge.
Betty and Doug, if I could have you stand and raise your right hand, and I'm going to read you the swearing in portion here, and once I finish this, please respond with "I do." Please, please raise your right hand and respond with "I do." Do you solemnly swear to support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that you will bear true faith, allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that you take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which you are about to enter? Congratulations.
Okay. Flag salute led by Commissioner Curry.
Doug, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and for all.
Potential conflicts of interest. Any commissioner who has a potential conflict of interest may now identify the item and recuse themselves from discussing or voting on the matter. Does anybody have any conflict of interest at this time? No. Okay. Oral communication. At this time, any member of the public may address the commission regarding any item over which the commission has jurisdiction. No action or discussion will be taken on any item not on the agenda. Issues raised will be referred to the chairperson for review. Members of the public shall limit their remarks to three minutes. Does anyone have anything they want to bring before the commission at this time? Only things that are not on the agenda. Okay. No oral communication. Our first item is a consent calendar. All items listed under consent calendar are considered routine. The complete consent calendar will be enacted in one motion by roll call vote. For purposes of discussion, any commission member may have an item removed from the consent calendar and made part of the regular agenda. The commission can then approve the remainder of the consent calendar. There's one item on the consent calendars, the consideration and necessary action on the minutes of the June 24th, 2024 meeting.
Chair Salas, before we get to that, can we just confirm roll call? I don't, I think we-
Oh, I'm so sorry. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Corey?
Here.
Commissioner Franco is absent tonight. Commissioner Garcia?
Here.
Commissioner Standridge?
Here.
Commissioner Kessler? And Chair Salas?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay. Now consent calendar. Consideration and necessary action on the minutes of the June 24th, 2024 meeting. Is there any discussion?
Move to approve the minutes from the June 24th meeting.
I second.
Roll call?
Commissioner Garcia first, and we got a second by Commissioner Corey. Commissioner Standridge?
Yes.
Commissioner Kessler? And Chair Salas?
Yes. When it's green? Because we can hear you. Okay. The next item is a, is a, these are, the next items are public, public hearing items. During the public hearing, I will first ask for staff's comments and reports on the item being discussed. After staff's presentation, I will then open the hearing to public testimony. I will then close the public hearing, at which time no member of the public shall address the commission unless specifically asked by a member of the commission through the chair. The planning commission will then discuss the matter among themselves and take action on the item being considered. The first item is a conditional use permit and notice of exemption to consider a proposal of approximately 57.8 square feet of electronic reader board signage to be constructed on an existing canopy structure located on the northwest corner of Floral Avenue in Whitson, APN 3582039. A draft notice of exemption has been prepared concerning the proposed project in compliance with provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA. Staff report? Staff report? Okay.
Thank you, Chair Salas, and the rest of the commissioners. I apologize, I have to do emcee tonight and present, so I'm gonna be going back and forth. Before you tonight, we do have a conditional use permit for a Plan 2344, and what we're allowing here, or proposing to allow, is four wraparound LED electronic reader board signs on the existing solar canopy at 2921 Whitson Street, APN 358200-39. We're, as I mentioned, we're proposing to consider this application for the conditional use permit to allow these four wraparound LED electronic reader board signs totaling about 57.8 square feet on the existing solar canopy at the Chevron Bubble Wash that's located at 2921 Whitson's Avenue, um, excuse me, Street. The proposed site is located on the northwest corner of Floral Avenue and Whitson Street. The site characteristics, current general plan zoning is regional commercial, commercial regional CR. On the whiteboard over here, we have the proposed location. As I mentioned, it's on the northwest corner there. Little bit of project history. In March of 2022, the project site was approved to expand the existing car wash to include 969 square feet to the convenience store and add one new canopy structure, and that was permit number 2022-00225, excuse me. So, the applicant is requesting to install this new electronic reader board to wrap around the facade of the recently approved solar canopy that's located on the northwest corner of the property. In addition, the applicant will be removing the existing freestanding sign that's there currently. Project analysis here, section, Selma Municipal Code Section 11-3-8I2B. Electronic reader boards do require conditional use permit, and that's why we're here tonight. The proposed sign will consist of installing four LED corner message displays and a facelit channel address numbers flush mounted to the existing solar canopy. The existing canopy is approximately 14 feet, five inches in height, with about roughly 60 square feet of sign area. In addition, the display will consist of 22.45 square feet of signage comprised of the site address and the logos on the side of the business. This does meet requirements in our section, in our municipal code section. Specifically in that section, it does require that the reader boards, electronic reader boards shall not exceed 800 square feet in area, and they should not be mounted on a height of more than 75 feet. And as you can see, this meets both of those requirements. In addition to electronic reader boards, it cannot contain or display illumination that is in motion or appears to be in motion, or changes in intensity or exposes its messages for less than four seconds. The interval between messages shall not be less than one second. The conditions of approval have been established to enforce this section of the municipal code in compliance with these conditions, and will ensure that the sign will not interfere with the motorists in the immediate area. Furthermore, the sign can display or, can only display or advertise businesses located on the parcel. Anything else would be considered off-premise and advertising, and that is prohibited. Any amendments to the sign would require review to the, by the Community Development Department to determine compliance with the Selma Municipal Code. So our recommendation, staff is recommending that the planning commission approve the conditional use permit, Plan 2344, to allow these four wraparound LED electronic reader board signs at the 2921 Whitson Street address for Bubble Wash. If you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer them for you.
Thank you. This time, we'll open the public hearing portion. Anyone has anything that they would like to bring before the commission on this subject? They can approach now. Please state your name.
Gilbert Martinez. I'm with A Plus Signs, who is going to be the ones installing the electronic reader boards. Okay, sorry. If you guys have any questions regarding it, I can answer them if you guys would like. We have installed numerous of these signs, not specifically these corner ones, they're a little bit unique, that the owner did think that was a cool kind of concept for the area, and it would bring something unique to the city. But we have installed LED reader boards and a lot of signage all through the Central Valley. A Plus Signs has been around for 20-plus years, and yeah, so any, any questions you have, I can definitely answer them.
You said no advertising on those, that board across there. What will it be displaying? And it will be flashing, is that correct? For a certain length of time? It said something about not more than a minute, or?
So it won't be flashing to not impede any kind of motorist sites and stuff like that? And it'll mainly be displaying, he has three different businesses basically on that same premise, the car wash, the solar charging station, and the gas station, so he will be displaying advertisements for those.
His own businesses.
Yeah, to try to bring people in, catch people's eyes, to bring them into that, that corner.
Will they be changing?
Every, I think it has to be a minimum of four seconds, and then it can change, and everything has to be stationary imagery. And then, I'm assuming he will maybe display his gas station prices, just as a stationary, you know, one of the, one of the messages to pop up, just to, you know, try to catch people from different angles.
Commissioner, if I could kind of expand on what the applicant is stating, so the note that is in the site plan specifically states, because we wanted to add this whenever they actually received their sign permit. They did not have specific details as to what actually they're going to be displaying, but as long as they do follow what is in our municipal code, which contains any display or illumination which is in motion or appears to be in motion or changes in intensity or exposes its image for less than four seconds, those would not be allowed. So whatever they do approve, and we will still have to review that through the signed permit review, as long as it's within those confines and it's following our municipal code.
I've seen them in the past where they just kind of like wrap around and keep going, and I just wanted to make sure that that's not what we're talking about.
No, it's not one of those, yeah. He, he saw the concept on, I believe it was the SAP Center in San Jose, and he thought it would be something cool to add to his business.
Just to expand on that as well, the images are, they're not supposed to be in motion.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything to? Okay, at this time, we'll close the public portion of the meeting and bring the matter back to the commission. And does anybody have any questions or discussion on the item?
Well, my only concern, and I think it's been addressed, is those god-awful flashes that happen on the signs for the Farney Automotive Group that are extremely distracting. It sounds like they've addressed it, and that's not going to be an issue, correct? Okay. Then I'm fine.
Anybody else have any? Anybody want to make a motion?
To approve? I'll second it.
Okay. Roll call?
We have a first by Commissioner Kessler, second by Commissioner Corey. Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Standridge?
Yes.
Chair Salas?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay. Our next item is major variance and notice of exemption to consider a major variance for the Lennar tentative subdivision map tract 6244. The major variance will include a rear setback reduction to 11 feet where 15 feet is required for lots, 1 through 13 and lots, 232 to 240, a rear setback to eight feet where 15 is required for lots, 241 to 297, and removal of the additional five-foot setback requirement for each additional story when adjacent to an R1 or R2 zone. The tentative subdivision map is located on the northeast corner of Floral Avenue and Dockery Avenue. A draft notice of exemption has been prepared concerning the proposed project in compliance with provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA. Staff report?
Good evening, commissioners, staff. My name is Kamara V. Wilkie, and this is Plan 2431. Thank you, Commissioner. You addressed essentially my first slide. This is an item, and I wanted to kind of clarify this. This is an item for a major variance within the previously approved tentative tract map 6244 submitted by Lennar Homes. I think there's a little bit of confusion in the staff report. I did reference in a previous originally approved tentative map. The original tentative map was approved back in 2021 by the city council, proposing 270 units with lots ranging from 4,000 to 13,000 in size. But the developer utilized 11-6.9 or minor deviations per our municipal code, increasing the unit count from 270 to 297. And I'll be addressing this a little bit more on the slides. The item we are discussing today, like I said, is a major variance for 79 units outside of or within that existing previously approved tentative subdivision map by Lennar. You can see here, this is a project location where that tentative map will exist. Here's a breakdown of the lots. The lots highlighted in blue show you the reduction, so lots 1 through 13 and 232 to 240 are going to have the 11-foot, 11-foot rear setback where 15 is required, and then lots 241 to 297 will have the, an eight-foot rear setback where 15 is required. Those homes will be two-story homes. Notice of exemption has been prepared and subject to approval by the planning commission. This project is exempt from SEQA per SEQA Guideline Section 15305, which is a minor alteration in land use, which includes variances. Okay, so, like I said, this is a 297 lot subdivision, and this subdivision will aid and provide mixed housing, mixed housing, mixed, or sorry, home sizes and different types of home types with varying yard sizes to ensure a more affordable, affordable community that appeals to a wide variety of home buyers. The proposed two-story unit in the tract, tract 2, sorry, 6244 will have a road buffer, Dockery Road, between the track and the existing single-story homes just west of Dockery. Additionally, a six-foot-high masonry wall will be constructed bordering the west side of the track. The proposed landscaping along the east side of Dockery will include proposed bay laurel trees, which will be approximately 12 feet in height. Furthermore, the front yards of the existing homes to the west of Dockery face east towards 6244, further increasing the distance between the existing and the proposed development. And to kind of further put that, or paint that picture, put it further in a context, I attached something from our improvement plans for this development. This is going to be off of Dockery Road. Dockery Road is already an existing 50 feet, and then going from the property line, you're going to have at least four foot of sidewalk along with 3.5 of landscape going all the way to the curb. So you're going to have at least 58, or close to 58 approximately, of a distance between the two developments, and that's not only to include the existing single-family zone or the existing single-family homes, they are facing Dockery Road with the front setback. So there's at least 15 feet there. So adding all of those will have a pretty large distance between what's existing and what is proposed. Oh, sorry, I'm not done. There's a lot on the side. Okay, so these specific plans, this Amberwood specific plan were drafted and approved years ago. So variances are expected by developers. As long as the city can make the findings that amended plans are substantially consistent with the overall intent of the specific plan and do not result in significant impacts not already addressed by the EIR or by subsequent environmental documents, staff will be able to make these findings. May of 2024, the developer received administrative direction from the staff as developer, as the developer proposed to increase the unit count, and this is what I was originally addressing earlier. They were, they increased the unit count of the approved tentative map from 270 to 297 on the final subdivision map. The amended map included lot sizes that now range from 3,000 to 11,400. These minor deviation adjustments remain in compliance with the Amberwood specific plan, as the density allows for the, the RM density for the Amberwood specific plan allows for 5.5, the 9.0 units per acre with minimum lot sizes of 3,000. So even with this, even with the change of the existing already approved map, they are still in compliance with the Amberwood specific plan. And to further that point, today, we are not talking about that, we are talking about the variances of those 79 lots. Staff is recommending the Plan, Planning Commission to approve Plan 24-31, subject to the prepared notice of exemption and resolution, and we are open for any questions.
This is a public hearing, so at this point, we will open the meeting to the public. If anyone has anything that they would like to bring before council. You're limited to three minutes, please state your name and address.
My name's Mike Jones. I live at 1300 Floral Avenue here in Selma, which would be directly across the street from this project. I've come before this board and before the city council several times, opposing this project, opposing it adamantly, completely, the entire project. This is still referred to as Amberwood. This is not Amberwood. Go back and look at the original Amberwood project. This is nothing like it. Every couple of years, we get an amendment to the plan, and it just keeps moving along and moving along, and it gets cheaper every time you do it. Currently, they're asking, it was 270, now they went 297. How does that help Selma? It doesn't help Selma, it only helps the developer, okay? He's looking at how many homes can I squeeze onto the land that you provided me, and nothing else. You're going to increase traffic, because there's no way to get to this without coming off the freeway all the way through town. Increase schools. These are four, five, I don't know, however many bedroom homes stuck on a post stamp of a lot. So now you've got schools affected by every one of those houses having multiple children in it. Fire, water, we've already gone through the septic thing. Selma came up, put up the money for the septic, right? When are you going to get paid back for that? It's going to be a long roll, okay? So I just, you know, looking at things, I hear all this stuff, right? So over the 2010 to 2022, do you know what Selma's growth was? 1.3% for a 10-year period. This is probably a 5% increase in Selma's population by this Amberwood facility. They've gone in, they, they want smaller lots, I keep hearing 10,000 square foot lots and all that. Count the numbers. The majority of them are 3,000 to 4,000 square foot. There's a few larger lots thrown into the mix so that they can keep presenting to you that there's larger lots. There's a very small handful of larger lots, okay? There are, if you look at it, there's 95 that are less than 5,000 square feet, there's 95 that are just slightly 5,000 square feet, and then there's another 80 that are somewhere above the 5,000 point. Roughly counting them, I found six to seven lots that were in the 8,000 to 10,000 square foot range. These homes, as far as I can tell, are all two-story homes. I didn't see in their plan one single-story home. So they all should be subject to this variance, because I believe the variance, I don't know what that was. Is that my time?
Sir, you're limited to three minutes. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to approach?
For the callers on the line, please use star nine to raise your virtual hand and star six to mute yourself. Chair Salas, I don't see any hands raised online.
Okay, at this time, we'll close the public hearing. Bring back to the commission for discussion and questions.
I have a question for staff. I understand a developer always needs a variance for one to a dozen lots. Is it common to have a developer ask for such a massive variance and such a large amount of lots after, we've heard the discussion when this, when this map was first presented to us, and a lot of people were against the smaller lots when they were 4,000. Now we're proposing 3,000 for a lot of these lots, and they're going to be very crowded together and no room for a family as far as a yard or anything like that. So those kids are going to be on the streets probably playing, creating more traffic and hazardous condition. Have we discussed all that? And is that usually common to have a developer ask for a variance for that many lots total in a subdivision?
It's not uncommon. I think when you have a lot of lots that resemble the same size, a lot of home builders have what they refer to as a lot fit analysis, and then what they come to find is the market is always changing, and what they can sell is dependent on what they can sell and what they can put on the lot. And in a lot of cases, the homes that may have otherwise been available for buyers in a previous market are no longer available, so they're adjusting to the market. So when you have a lot of lots that resemble the same size, what they're doing is they're trying to promote flexibility to the home buyer. So you may see different variations of different homes, but at the worst case, they just need to provide some flexibility in the event they can't provide as many options as they would like based on the existing zoning. So a variance is sometimes required.
And with, with that many homes per acre, is that still meets the low-density zoning of that neighborhood?
It, it's still consistent with the specific plan. I mean, the, the discussion regarding the increase in lots, it's not like the original approval is increasing lots. What they're doing is they're shifting density from other portions of the project to this part of the project. So you may have smaller lots in this part of the project, but they can't exceed what was approved for the project. So what you'll see is if they're moving lots from this to this- So what you'll see is if they're moving lots from this to this project, other projects will have less lots. So you'll have larger lots. It's just the first phase they're front-loading with some of these lots.
And we're gonna be sure to enforce that density on the rest of the project because I don't want it to become like, oh, now we do this, then we ask for an exception for the next one and the next one. And all of a sudden, all these home values are gonna take uh when we are considering other higher-end subdivisions around them, so.
No, I understand completely. Um one thing with the specific plan, I think everybody needs to remember, the specific plan was adopted in two thousand fifteen when there was a different market, a different type of uh condition for people to purchase homes. Since then, the market has changed, interest rates have changed. And so in order for any developer, not just this developer, any developer to be able to sell homes, which is what we want, considering it was brought up our growth rate since, I think it was two thousand ten, has been about one point three percent. And in some years, we actually declined in population due to lack of housing. And so making sure the market is conducive of having a variety of home types within a subdivision is really important for any level of buyer, whether it's first-time home buyer, maybe it's a senior who's looking to downsize into a home with a smaller yard or other things like that. These type of lots produce different conditions for differing families. Everybody knows the the boomer generation is the largest segment of our population. It's also gonna be the oldest portion of our population. So having homes that are maybe smaller, less maintenance and affordable is not a bad thing for Selma to have options for varying segments of the homebuyer population. Any developer wants to promote flexibility in any plan, and that is simply what this is doing. The next item on our agenda for the housing element, I think, promotes a similar concept in providing a variety of home types um within a community so that you have housing for all segments of the population, which is what we would aim to do, not just one segment of the population. And this is, these are the type of actions that I think would be consistent with housing element as well.
Well, unfortunately, those are all two-story homes, so I don't see a senior wanting to downsize in a two-story home. If we had single stories in the mix with smaller lots, I understand totally because that would fit a senior who does not wanna do yard work and want a smaller house to maintain. But being a two-story, I don't think they're fit for seniors.
Are are they the majority of the houses two-story? Are they all two-story?
I believe the majority of them are two-story, but I don't think it it prohibits them from having one story if that's what the buyer desires.
Because my concern is removal of the additional five-feet side yard setback required for each additional story, which means the two stories and you're getting rid of those five feet on each side. So how much room does that leave between houses?
Well, they're still going to have the five feet because there is still the requirement that ten feet between homes are still required in the specific plan. That requirement that we are essentially ask or that the applicant is asking for comes from our municipal code. And that is only when it's um adjacent to existing R one and R two zones, which is the development that is to the uh west of Dockery. So the units in between the six-two-four-four tract is still going to have five feet of side setback. So five feet and five feet will give you that ten-foot uh separation between homes.
Doesn't that make the house look like a box, though?
There's only five feet between the house and the fence.
Yeah.
Five feet. That's it.
That that's allowed in our current municipal code as is.
Correct.
That seems like houses piled up on top of each other.
And this is also, Jerome has already um explained this, but the market, this is very, this is, this portion is common in regards to a little bit larger homes, maybe on smaller lots that are a little bit closer together, closer together. The density is going to be increasing. We'll see how that is going to play a favor into the city when we are trying to uh meet our arena numbers and trying to be in compliance with the state. And to your point, on R M zone or an R M designation in the Amberwood specific plan does allow for five-point-five to nine-point-zero um units per acre for density. It also allows for three thousand square feet lots or square foot lots. We are only here just because they're asking for the uh the rear setback. We are not here because they're asking for two stories or more lots. That is already within the the minor deviation that's already within our municipal code.
Yeah, it's that Selma already approved so many apartment buildings. And the hopes was at least the single-family homes would still feel like a single-family homes. And now it feels like it's everywhere it's gonna look like either condos or townhouses, whatever you wanna call them. Because once they're close, this this close together, it takes away from the feel of a small town. And that's just my opinion, honestly.
Yeah, no, it feels like it's not a neighborhood. You don't have yards. You don't have side yards. You don't have backyards. You don't have, you're you're squishing the lot sizes and you're making the houses bigger. So there's, it's like, like she said, like townhouses. They're just all piled up on top of each other. It just feels like it's too crowded. And and that's my opinion.
So just to reiterate Kamara's point, the 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 density and the com- the the composition of the Amberwood specific plan, that is really not the discussion tonight because that has been approved. The tentative map has also been approved and the increase in lots is allowed under the the administrative uh portion of the specific plan. That being said, I I I can understand the commission's viewpoint. We did approve a forty-three lot subdivision that had a minimum of eight thousand square foot lots. So it's not like there aren't other options in the community, right? There are other subdivisions that we have in process that are five thousand square foot lots or larger. This is just one segment of the residential housing component that A, we are mandated by the state to comply with to try and meet our arena numbers. That being said, I don't, I don't want to, you know, push the commission in one way or another. You all have your own opinions. The variance is what's on the table tonight. The discussion regarding housing is a different issue.
So the apartments we've been approving, aren't those gonna help our arena numbers in in and of themselves?
They will help a portion of our arena numbers. There are four segments of our arena numbers we need to meet. Above moderate, moderate, low, and very low numbers. Those, depending on the density that they're approved at, if they're twenty eight, twenty uh units or more per acre, those help our arena numbers for low and very low uh uh arena. For single-family housing, unless they're being sold uh as part of, you know, a program, uh first-time homebuyers program to low and very low, which these aren't, their market rate. Uh they usually only aid your moderate and above moderate arena numbers. So they will help our arena numbers, just which segment of our arena numbers.
You've said we've approved other planning, other um tracks for forty-six and different numbers of housing. We're talking about two hundred ninety-seven little houses compared to forty-five bigger houses that have been approved. It just feels like we have approved a lot of apartments. And by by approving, I know what you're bringing to us. You want us to approve smaller setbacks. And how does, so that they can get more houses in this section. The next section, they're all gonna have to be huge lots because they have to keep the same numbers. That you said, they got this many houses, but they're putting all these houses in this section. So the next section, everything's gonna be huge lots, and the next section's even gonna be bigger lots?
I mean, you're talking about less than one percent of all the houses being built. I mean, twenty-seven homes out of twenty-two-hundred homes is a very small segment of the entire project that's proposed to be built out in the Amberwood specific plan. So you're shifting one percent of the density from a future project to this site. And so the entire project is twenty-two-hundred homes. What has been approved will not exceed twenty-two-hundred homes as it gets built out.
But I'm afraid that if we go this way, that the twenty-two-hundred proposed homes are gonna become twenty-five or twenty-seven-hundred.
They couldn't, they couldn't increase the number without a subsequent approval of the planning commission in the city council. That is, in the specific plan, your environmental documentation cannot exceed twenty-two-hundred homes.
What would it be a slippery slope? Would be like, hey, we'll allow this increase. We'll allow this one. And then they're gonna be going, well, they're, we're gonna keep going.
From what I'm hearing tonight, I don't know if the commission would support a proposal to increase future segments of, you guys wanna keep what was approved, which is totally fine. It's just there's, that's not A before you tonight, nor have we heard of or received any inquiries about increasing the density of the specific plan. And so you guys can be on record tonight that the commission would not support an increase in the overall unit count of the specific plan. That's perfectly fine. What staff is trying to get um uh the consideration of the commission night is for a variance with the fact that portions of a project that were approved in two thousand fifteen with provisions that allow it to increase without any subsequent approval is what is occurring. Now, if the commission decides, you know, we don't wanna approve a variance for these X, Y, and Z reasons, that's firmly within your right. However, staff would like to point out that this provides flexibility to this home builder or any other home builder that comes in after them with on, within only this tract. Two hundred ninety-seven homes to promote building types for what the market allows at this time.
The issue would be that we're setting precedence. When this map came to us originally, we were told, it's okay, go ahead and approve it the way it is because you guys are gonna have control. They're gonna keep coming back when they're gonna do other things. So it seems that every time we approve a section, we get another request to approve a different section that supposedly we're only discussing this, we're not discussing that. But I think it's gonna snowball and all these are gonna end up being pretty much what we didn't want to approve from the beginning, so.
For for the record, and and the city attorney can correct me if I'm wrong, one approval of a variance precedent does not make. So uh every application for a variance is is evaluated on its own merits. Again, the specific plan allows the increase. Staff didn't encourage the increase. They used the provisions within the existing specific plan, which was approved by planning commission and the city council to allow the increase of the map. Now, on future maps, the planning commission holds all the cards because you guys are sitting here talking about what you guys would prefer to see. What you guys can recommend changes, you guys can recommend alterations to the city council, right?
We recommend to the council, but the council would ultimately have the final decision.
And I understand that, but the commission is.
It's taken out, and it's taken out of our hands.
At the end of the day, the land use policy of the city at this moment in time is a project was approved with two hundred and seventy lots under a specific plan that allows for administrative increases of up to ten percent. And that is what staff is going by because that is the land use policy of the city.
So by approving the smaller setbacks, we're allowing the addition of twenty-seven houses?
And the variance is separate and apart from the increase in lot count. That is not what's before you tonight. The increase in lot count's gonna happen regardless of your action tonight. That is the proposed final map that is filed with the city under the administrative increase allowed of up to ten percent in lot count. They they could design, what what they would have to do is design a house that fits. If you guys don't wanna allow an eleven-foot rear setback, then they would have to go back. And those lots may be delayed because they'll have to go back to an architect, redesign a product that would fit within the footprint that is within the specific plan without a variance.
So they're asking for smaller lots and setback adjustments so they could fit a house and not go over the percentage of the lot coverage? Wow.
People won't have any yard at all.
For what it's worth, some people don't want lots. I mean, it's a personal preference. I think some people view it as a hassle. Um maybe financially, they don't wanna pay for water. They don't wanna pay for a landscaper. Um some people don't have kids, so they don't need a yard. Um so I mean, I've heard of of folks who are ecstatic about a lot of the product that's in the city of Fresno. You know, um the elevation product at uh, what is that, Herndon uh and Fortner? Um, you know, those are similar style. I think they only own one car. Um but they're on like twenty-eight hundred square foot lots uh with, you know, eight-foot rear setbacks. And they sold like that. And the value that they hold, because they're, A, those are in a gated community, so they have specific regulations on maintenance and landscaping. They have a community pool for some of them.
So it's a planned unit development?
Within another subdivision, yeah. I mean, it was all the same developer. It was all Wilson Homes.
But that's not what they're proposing here. These are just gonna be.
But you're still gonna have this within a C F D. They're gonna have enhanced landscaping. They're gonna have a, what is it, a two-point-three acre park for this portion of the development. All the landscaping will be assessed and maintained by the residents through tax assessments in the community facilities district. So you have all these features that preserve the value of this neighborhood, which is what it is. It's a neighborhood. It's just the first neighborhood out of Amberwood. And so, I mean, the features that are within the Amberwood specific plan, staff is not taking those lightly. We are enforcing those uh policies and design criteria and such as community signage, wall design, landscaping, monumentation. All of these things is part of this project, which you, for what it's worth, we don't have a lot of that in town right now. And so you can talk about small lots, you can talk about other things. There are other things that hold the value in the subdivision that we don't have in town.
Will these be two-car garages or one car? Two-car?
It it the number next to the plan is at the square footage. Plan twenty-five oh three and plan three thousand six is at the square footage of the home. On the site, um on the site plans. Um af- the page that is right after the track map. Before the elevations.
It says setback reduction typical plot plan on the top.
Can, the applicant is here, so he could verify that, but that, if it's plan and those four-digit numbers, it might be the type of home. I mean, in my experience, and they can clarify if they would like, but in my experience, that's typically the total square footage of that floor plan.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Thomas Davis with Lennar Homes, Fresno, California. I've heard all of your comments and I I understand them. Being in this business, there's a lot of things that from outside of our view, other people can see or, you know, think that certain things apply to everyone. But in this case, as Mr. Jerome Keen and and Kamara had stated, different things for different people that they're really looking for and and not a one-size-fits-all kind of business. You gotta provide some opportunities for everyone. And it does make it a community or a neighborhood after the fact, even though, you know, the lots are smaller, the yards are smaller. Sometimes that's exactly what people need in their life, and that's what they're looking for. And a lot of times, it's not available in the older homes that are like that. So we we've done many homes like this, many subdivisions, and it's worked out well. I think it'll be great for this city. As far as your question on the on the um square footage, uh it's either the plan number or if there's another number below it that has uh would be the square footage. The number at the top, I don't believe is square footage.
It just says Plan twenty-five oh three.
Correct. And I believe if there should be a number on the bottom, smaller. No other number.
There's no other numbers.
By any chance, do you know roughly the, how many square feet these homes are going to be?
They'll be anywhere from two thousand one hundred square feet to thirty-five hundred on the larger lots.
Thank you.
Pretty much the range they're gonna be in, different, different sizes.
Twenty-one hundred's the smallest?
I believe so. On on this site, yes.
Pretty good size.
And what percentage of the homes do you believe are gonna be single-story?
I I don't have that information in front of me. That's gonna be uh for the, our marketing department who put put those together depending on what's needed. But, you know, single-family is definitely also part of what we do in the mix. But as we sit here tonight, because we wouldn't be building the homes probably for another year and a half, two years, can't really say what would be put on it until we know what, you know, the market is. what, you know, the market is gonna drive it. And that's when we decide, you know, if we need story or it just depends on the market at that time.
Value, then. The people. Right, right, and they're not, the subdivisions.
No, but you might get investors who are buying rentals.
Excuse me, if if you guys could direct direct your comments to the public. Yes, thank you. If I could say something, and I hope I'm not speaking out of turn, listen to everything that you guys are saying, this is a little bit personal, but I'm not from here, I'm from the Bay Area, I've been here for the past, oh, almost ten years. And Bay Area is a little bit different, of course, there is higher density, there's a lot of small homes. You guys say that seniors may not be, may not want a two-story home for smaller lots, but I know a lot of younger people would, especially on how expensive homes are, they're not gonna try and use the money that they do have left over after paying mortgage for this size of a home to go and, you know, redo their front and backyard and pay for the water. So the mindset is a little bit different and you, like Lennar and the applicant is saying, they have to go with the trends. The Bay Area is very expensive and they're pricing people out, people are moving inland. Selma needs to be able to have the opportunity to capture some of these individuals that are coming from the north to the south. Providing these types of option options gives gives diversity and I hope there's no fear, I guess, that would be for other multifamily units or other types of projects because the individuals that'll be buying these homes will probably be the same types of individuals that will buy homes with larger lots. It's not like you're gonna have a completely different makeup of individuals. This will still be a community and this is only one track within a larger vision that the city of Selma has, so.
And I I I see where you're coming from and I understand that. And when we first voted on this, I saw it as a, like, a great neighborhood with with first-time buyer, houses available to them, and then first move-up or people who want to get a larger house or a larger lot. And and you're, you've increased the first-time buyer houses by twenty twenty-seven. So it's becoming more of a, of a, of a first-time buyer neighborhood and less of a first-time move-up neighborhood. And that's, that's where I'm stuck. I I really wanted this to be, you know, the the beginning of a great increase in the amount of middle-income people coming to our city. And I, this is where my fear lies, is that we're now increasing the number of houses that are available for people with the lower incomes because they can make it affordable by shrinking the lot size and shrinking the setbacks and shrinking this and shrinking that and going two stories. And that's, that's my fear.
And I will just respond to that. There's still not gonna be a, for the people that you guys may be worried about the demographic looking, it's not affordable still. Just because the setbacks are slightly smaller and the lots are smaller, these homes are still gonna be going for a good price. Now, like I said, the general makeup may not be that different, but I will say that first-time home buyers, they're also looking different as well. It's not like these are kids coming out of college and these are the first-time home buyers. You're gonna get a mix of individuals who can afford homes in today's age. Yeah, and to Kamara's point, the days of being able to purchase a house in your early twenties, I don't know if that exists anymore. I think you're talking about first-time home buyers maybe being in your early thirties, mid-thirties, based off of current pricing and current interest rates. I think the applicant, you know, pointed out that most of the homes are gonna be twenty-one hundred square feet or higher. And so that raises the cost of the housing even further. You're not talking about, my prior employer had homes that started at seventeen hundred, sixteen hundred square feet, and they were two stories. So, you know, it it's, they're, the market, it has changed, you're still gonna have some first-time home buyers, but that demographic has changed. For us as a city, as we've talked about, we've approved other projects that I think promote, I think what you're talking about, even in that second or what maybe some people call their forever home, you know? So we have another project that I think is more in line with that. We just received another draft subdivision for another five, I think it's five thousand and up for the most part, styles project. So, you know, provide, providing options is as much part of what our job is, and I think the housing element speaks to that as well, providing segments of housing for all portions of the population, whether it's first-time home buyers, move-ups, or forever homes, senior housing, these are all things that go into the consideration of when the city approves land use plans. And so at the end of the day, I think, you know, Kamara makes a great point. Part of what we're looking at too is providing housing for areas that are unaffordable now, that is part of our task. And when I started at Madera County in two thousand six, they were talking about something like six million people moving to the Central Valley by twenty fifty. It was what they were talking about because they saw what was happening in the Bay Area in terms of they are not approving housing or they can't provide enough housing and because they don't provide enough housing, the cost goes up. So your service-level employees, your manufacturing, hard-working, blue-collar employees have no place to live. Well, we would love for them to come to Selma and bring their jobs with them because then we have a base to say, hey, you guys need, you know, a workforce, a skilled workforce? Well, they all relocated here, let's go add to the industrial park, let's go build a business park. It, they drive, they, it it's chicken or the egg, right? And at some point, we have regional commercial, we have significant regional commercial. Expanding the regional commercial is another option, but then you become, you could, you become reliant on just that as part of your community. And I think we want a balanced community, we want neighborhoods, we want good, sound, nice-looking, aesthetically pleasing development. The thing that I will add to just the affordability on the cost of a lot, the Community Facilities District assessment goes into people, you know, qualifying for their home loan. And so when you have amenities that tax on a cost to your home, that further prices other people out. So again, I think the market that we're talking about is not what people used to view as first-time home buyers. I think in Madera County, you know, some of their projects there, they have homeowners' association fees, they have community facility district fees, and they have assessments that tack on, you know, an additional thousand, three, three thousand? Three hundred a month to their, to their lots, that makes them largely unaffordable there too. And so when you talk about affordability, you can't just look at the price of the home because there's other things that go into it. And sometimes having a smaller lot with less landscaping or less pavement or, you know, a two-story house or a one-story house or an energy-efficient house is more affordable for for people than a six thousand square foot lot with ample landscaping, a swimming pool and things like that. So, I mean, I'll get off my soapbox, but at the end of the day, you know, this is what we're tasked with as a community to provide multi-levels of housing options.
Well, I've been on this commission for a while and I've worked with you guys for a while and you know that I'm not against growth, quite the opposite, actually. So what you're envisioning is somebody comes in and buys one of these smaller houses with no setbacks or with the smaller setbacks. As their family grows, they may be buy another house in Selma, larger lot, they could actually have a pool or something else in it for their children. And so we have to have these houses to kind of get the the ball moving so that the rest of the growth can also take place. Is that kind of a summary of what you're saying?
I mean, let's say people like living in the neighborhood and they want to stay in the neighborhood, you know, there'll be other housing options for them to stay in the neighborhood. I mean, you have a proposed elementary school proposed as part of this project that would be a brand-new school to Selma. I'm sorry? Yeah, linear parks, which we don't have any in town, trails, this one's gonna have its own park with amenities that, you know, is gonna be attractive and it's gonna be maintained. And so I think you'll have people that say, hey, I love living in Amberwood. I mean, there, there's people that I know that moved into like Riverstone and then relocated to another community plan, similar style project, but wanted to stay in the area, right? And so I think you could see people that love the community that we're building in Selma, that want to stay either on that, in that neighborhood, or they can find other options within the general vicinity, either in this project or future, in this tract, let me just say, this portion of the Amberwood project or in future parts. And so I think it's part of our duty to provide neighborhoods that are inclusive. I think having inclusive neighborhoods is also the type of community that we want to be so that, you know, we can have different people commingling with different people, right? And I mean, for me especially, being inclusive is a really big thing. And I think that's what this plan has always promoted in terms of, you have, what is it, eleven different lot types in the specific plan, ranging from different sizes down to three thousand square feet? That was envisioned in the specific plan when it was adopted. And so I think we're, we're getting, again, off track on the variance, but to to the commissioner's point, I think part of our job as an agency is to promote multi-levels of housing because we don't just have one income level in the city of Selma.
That's, I wanted to say, right, we're, the only thing in front of us is the variants.
I understand that. And look, the bottom line is they're gonna have to sell these houses.
Yeah.
And if somebody says, I don't want an eight-foot setback, they're not gonna sell that house.
If I could touch on one last thing about the senior, the aging community not wanting a two-story house, what I'm seeing, I'm sorry, on a personal level, what I'm seeing as well as a business level is more of the seniors are being taken care of by their children, their adult children and their families, so they're all moving in together. And in this case, this is one of the things that might happen a lot of times is they'll have a two-story house and, you know, the the family will be upstairs and the, and the aging senior that they're taking care of will stay downstairs. And it gives that opportunity for that family to stay together and take care of the aging population as well, which is not a lot of availability of of new homes out there for that purpose. So it's not necessarily that they wouldn't want a two-story home, but they're being able to reunite with family because they have room now to put them in and take care of them.
So do your floor plans provide for first-story living?
Sure, yes, they all do.
Bedrooms and bathrooms and the whole thing?
Absolutely.
For for what it's worth, multi-generational housing is a, is a large, growing segment of the population and it is very common in town.
Any other questions or discussion? Anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it. Roll call.
We have first by Commissioner Kessler, second by Commissioner Stanridge, Commissioner Corey?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Chair Salas?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Chair, I have to leave because I'm getting all kinds of texts that my patient, my boss is in a surgery and that he's out of recovery, so I need to go pick him up, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's fine, we'll, we'll still have a quorum. Thank you, Commissioner Kessler. Okay, the next item on the agenda is a general plan EIR addendum, rezone general plan amendment and accompanying accompanying general plan EIR addendum to recommend approval to the City Council to adopt the two thousand twenty-three to two thousand thirty-one city of Selma housing element. The adoption of the two thousand twenty-three to two thousand thirty-one housing element includes an addendum to the current general plan environmental impact report, a rezone of twenty-two parcels, forty-two-point-oh-six acres to an R-four high-density multifamily zone district and a general plan amendment of all twenty-two parcels, forty-two-point-oh-six acres to high-density to ensure zoning and land use consistency. An addendum to the general plan EIR has been prepared concerning the proposed project.
Thank you.
Staff report.
So Kamara B. Wilkie, again, so thank you for the synopsis, and I'll be passing this off to Nicole from Placeworks. The housing element is a state-manded, state-mandated eight-year policy document that is a component of the Selma general plan. The overall purpose of the element is to identify current and projected housing needs, showing locations where houses can be built and programs to meet the community's housing needs. And the city prepared its housing element as a part of a multi-jurisdictional housing element with efforts with Fresno Cog and their consultants were Placework. Before I send it off, I just want to say, from staff, thank you to Placeworks, the consultants, thank you for QK and working on this two-year process. And here we have Nicole West to present.
Greetings, good evening, everybody, can you hear me? Okay, thank you for the introduction and the conversation preceding this presentation could not have been more ideal for setting the stage for what I'll be talking about. I'm going to share my screen, oh, I, it says sharing is not turned on and I need to send a request. Okay, now it will let me. Fantastic. And can you see the, the beginning of the presentation?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. So as Kamara said, we've been working for over two years, we're really at the end of the, the road here, a long journey in helping the city of Selma to update its housing element of its general plan. And that was a, through a multi-jurisdictional effort with the other Fresno-area jurisdictions. So I'll cover an overview of the housing element and the outreach that was completed as part of this process. I'll talk about the regional housing needs allocation, which is referred to as RENA, which was already discussed a little bit, setting the stage. I'll talk about the housing element programs and the review process that we went through which, with HCD to get to this point, the environmental review, that's the SEQA document that goes along with this. And then I'll, I'll touch again on the schedule and the recommendation that staff is asking for tonight. So this is one of the eight mandated elements of the general plan and it needs to be updated every eight years. Although you see that there was an adoption deadline that has come and gone, I don't think you need to worry because you're headed towards that requirement now and really nearly all of the jurisdictions across the state in this sixth cycle have had a lot of difficulty with the schedule because the state passed a whole bunch of new laws a few years ago and continues to pass new laws and enact tougher requirements, but they didn't give jurisdictions any additional time with those new requirements. So you're in the same boat as a lot of other jurisdictions. And HCD knows that you've been working with them, I, I don't need to bury the headline, you've actually received conditional compliance on your housing element, so that is very exciting. The housing element is the plan for accommodating the jurisdiction's fair share of the regional housing need. And I'll get into that in a little more detail in a minute. So as a regional effort, we have one document that is before you tonight that has regional information. We prepared this so that the, all the jurisdictions together can get that benefit of the sort of administrative streamlining of doing combined effort of data analysis. And then you also get a bigger picture when you see everything presented side by side. And then the local appendix that is specific to Selma, that's what I'll be talking about in a little bit greater detail this evening. We had a lot of outreach for this process, engaged with stakeholders and the public in a number of ways. Stakeholders tend to be service providers and folks like that that really have their finger on the pulse of the needs of the community and specifically segments of the community that are most vulnerable and need a little bit more consideration when it comes to their housing needs, like seniors and those with disabilities. We did a community workshop and we did a joint planning commission city council meeting here a couple of years ago virtually, which I attended and, and helped with the presentation for that. We released the draft element for comment back in two thousand twenty-three and then revised it based on HCD's comments back in September of this year. and then revised it based on HCD's comments back in September of this year. So the regional housing needs allocation, these are numbers that are crunched at the state level and then given to all of the different local cogs that allocate them to their individual jurisdictions. And they're not just based on population growth exclusively. They're also based on where transit and jobs are located or expected to be located. And they're also based on rates of overcrowding. And so it, the allocation that Selma has received for the eight-year cycle is 1,492 new units to accommodate the housing need. And those are broken up by income level. So as we were talking about, or as you were talking about before I started presenting, there are needs of all the different income levels because they can only afford a certain price. So you can see in the column next to income group, the number of units that have been allocated that are needed to be accommodated for each income level. And then the way that we help you to identify how you're going to meet that need is first we look at which sites are already adequately zoned to meet that need. And then we look at pending projects where we can count units. And we also look at projected accessory dwelling units. Those are not tied to a specific site. Those could be anywhere throughout the community, but we can take some credit there for those. And then we also look at where rezoning is going to happen if we can't meet the RENA with those other methods. And then you can see in this table that we do have a total capacity that meets the RENA with a little bit of a surplus. And that surplus does look a bit slim, but there are a lot of things that are anticipated to be coming online that aren't counted towards the RENA. There's annexations and projects that we just simply were not able to count towards the RENA for this housing element based on the strict criteria that HCD has. But once those are developed, if they meet the criteria for the lower or moderate income levels, you will still get credit for them on your annual progress reports, even though we didn't count them towards the RENA in the housing element. So this, this also includes rezoning and you can see some maps here of the location of the rezoned sites. This one is the northern areas of the city. And then we've got the southern area of the city. And then the program. So this is a, a really pivotal moment in this process where we shift from drafting this document and going through the review process and getting it approved and adopted and certified to implementation. And so these, this is the first of two slides that list all the different programs that the city will be implementing during this planning period. But as noted in the staff report, there are several of these programs that the city has already made significant progress on. And so that includes the objective design standards. And then a lot of strides that were made towards permitting and encouraging accessory dwelling units. And then also some zoning code amendments to streamline permitting that happened as well. And that is part of Program 17. And there's some additional components of Program 17 that will be implemented over the coming years. So the review process, we first submitted the draft to HCD last December. And we got a comment letter, made revisions in response to those comments, submitted the draft again. And they came back with some additional things that needed to be addressed. We addressed those sufficiently and then the city received its letter of conditional compliance on September 20th of this year. So just to get a little bit more detailed, I will not drone on and on and waste too much of your time. And I'm, I'm happy to take questions afterwards, but just to give you a few slides that kind of go over those details about what HCD was looking for when they asked us to make revisions. They are always making sure that all the programs have specific commitments, that they target specific locations and, and that ties back into all of that demographic analysis that we did. And, and this, looking at all the census data and things like that to see where certain things were needed. Then the programs have to be tied to where things are needed. Each program has to have metrics or some kind of numerical target or quantified objective to track progress. And then fair housing has been a really big thing in this sixth cycle. And so there's four major categories of fair housing strategies. And HCD really wants to make sure that all jurisdictions across the state are including programs that facilitate fair housing with these four strategies. Kind of like what we were talking about a few minutes ago with mobility refers to the ability to move to the neighborhood of your choice. And so say you are downsizing or your family is growing and you want to stay in your neighborhood. Can you do that? Do you have the options to do that? And then choice and affordability, these are strategies that promote production. Place-based strategies, this is the thing that in this cycle is, you know, kind of makes people scratch their head and say, I thought this was a housing element because these are a lot of things that have to do with things that aren't exactly housing. But it's all part of that same package of fair housing and, and neighborhood choice and making sure that there aren't certain neighborhoods that are always getting the short end of the stick as far as infrastructure investments and beautification. And then the fourth category is displacement, so protecting existing residents from being displaced. And then the other thing that is really important as far as programs and fair housing is making sure that the programs do address the contributing factors that are found as a result of the analysis for your particular community. And these may be similar to other communities in your region, but they are also specific to Selma. And they are, there's a really a deep dive into the analysis that you can look at in the housing element that revealed these trends. And so part of that, what I was mentioning as far as neighborhood improvements, the, some of the most recent comments from HCD were about adding more information about grants the city is pursuing and, and things that the city is going to do to improve neighborhoods where it's most needed. And then the switching gears to the environmental document that goes along with this housing element, as well as the rezoning and redesignating of the sites. The Placeworks has prepared an addendum to the general plan EIR. And that is what is being recommended tonight. So as I noted, we've been on this journey for quite a while together. And it's really exciting that we're getting near the end here. We're here tonight to recommend, ask you to recommend adoption. And so at the November 11th meeting of the city council, we're asking them to adopt these documents and then we'll submit the housing element back to HCD for the 60-day final certification review. And then you should be getting that, that certification letter at that point. So staff is recommending that the planning commission conduct this hearing and then adopt a resolution recommending that the city council approve the addendum, amend the general plan by adopting the housing element, and then direct city staff to submit the adopted housing element to HCD. And then should HCD come back and ask for any minor modifications as needed for certification, the resolution has a little bit of language there to make sure that that can be done without having to come back for adoption again. And I'm happy to take any questions. I also have my colleague Mark Teague on the line as well. And he's an expert in many things and also particularly in SEQA.
The only thing I would like to add is I want to share praise and thanks to Trevor, our contract planner. He has been really the bridge between the city staff and Placeworks. This has been a more than two-year process. I'm new coming on and he has always been available at the drop of a hat, very knowledgeable. And I can't praise him more, so. Thank you, Trevor.
Agreed.
I, i- if I could add, apart from that, there were other portions of the housing element, which we have also already completed in terms of some of the zoning code updates, which he was also a part of. And so when Kamara says he was a bridge, he's a golden gate bridge as far as I'm concerned, as far as being a connector. And like I said, we wouldn't be where we were, where we're at right now with the transition. Kamara coming on board, me coming on board last year, this was already in process. This was already a train moving, right? And, and he kept it going for us. And like I said, like Kamara said, we wouldn't be where we were at. He's always been available to us and, and we can't thank him enough.
This is a public hearing item. And so at this time, we will open the public hearing. And if anyone has anything that they would like to address the commission on. Loop, is there anyone online?
For the callers on the line, please use star nine to raise your virtual hand and star six to meet yourself. Chair Salas, I don't see any hands raised.
There's no one in the room, so we will close the public hearing portion of this item and bring it back to the commission for any discussion or questions.
Well, I just want to say thanks, Trevor, and thanks to the staff and planning committee for working on all that. We know we actually have to get with the current century, meeting all the requirements. So we appreciate your efforts.
I'd like to add that one word that Natalie used multiple times was mandate. So this is to make us compliant with the state. And if we don't approve it, we'll be out of compliance, correct?
Yes.
That, that would be correct. I think what, what is so rarely discussed or what are mandated elements of your general plan? Land use, circulation, safety and housing. This is a mandated component. There's probably one or two that I'm missing because nobody ever gets them all on the first try without looking it up. The housing element is a mandated component of the, of the general plan. If part of your general plan is out of compliance, making general plan consistency findings on future projects is impossible. And so what we would be doing is basically stopping everything if, if this item were to not move forward. And so again, it's a lot of updating. This is one of the few items that requires state approval. It's a local document, but it requires state approval because housing is an issue in California for a lot of reasons. I mean, you hear all the laws that have been passed to streamline. You know, we adopted objective design standards to be consistent with that. We adopted accessory dwelling unit standard plans to help expedite the process for people in town to build accessory dwelling units to reduce the cost of, you know, hiring an architect or purchasing plans, right? There's plans on our website that people can just say, I want to build, what is it, like a 770 square foot accessory dwelling unit? Plans are done, no plan check fees, and they can just go. And so the city is moving, I think, in the right direction towards promoting housing as the state sees fit. But I think these are also tools that are going to just benefit on a local level and that should have probably been done anyway.
Yeah, we need a motion to to adopt the, adopt the housing element, the
I'll make a motion to adopt the general plan EIR addendum, rezone and general plan amendment, amendments, sorry.
Recommend approval to
Approval to city council.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a recommendation from Chair Corey, seconded by, excuse me, Commissioner Corey, seconded by Chair Salas. Commissioner Franco?
He's absent.
Thank you. Commissioner Garcia? Commissioner Stanridge?
Yes.
For the record, Commissioner Kessler had to leave, but we still have a quorum, so motion approved.
And then the, the final item is to consider cancellation of the regular planning commission meeting scheduled for November 25th, 2024 and December 23rd, 2024.
If we don't have any ongoing business, I guess, considering that they're this close to the holidays.
Both holidays, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, and this was in the staff report, and I think a little bit of language was, was added in the staff report due to the fact that we can have this discussion for a special meeting that would can be created for, was it the month of, month of December? If necessary.
Necessary and urgent business arises, we can always call for a special meeting. Otherwise, happy holidays, everyone.
I think, I think at this point, I don't believe we have any applications that would be scheduled for December as we, as was discussed by the commissioner. That may change depending on any time-sensitive items that may arise. At, right now, I don't envision any, but possibly one.
Yeah, possibly one, actually definitely one, a major variance that may be coming to planning commission. It was the ADU being
Oh, okay. Yeah, so we do have a perspective for one item. What I would propose right now is obviously consider cancellation of the two regularly scheduled meetings because those are holiday weeks. And getting a quorum is typically hard holiday weeks, nor do we want to force people to listen to our long-winded staff reports. If you guys don't have to. And so what I would, what I would ask is what week would the commission be available in December, if possible? That if we have a special meeting, if we have a special meeting, we can schedule it for that week. We'll aim for that week. Right now, I believe there is a city council meeting scheduled for December 2nd.
And they tip, they typically cancel the second meeting.
The only meeting in December is December 2nd. And so
We do the 9th because if we get too close, people might be already on vacation.
That would be my suggestion. That is an off week for city council regardless. I don't, we'd have to double check. I don't think that there's another commission that meets on that day. But what we'll do is we'll shoot for that week. And so if someone's scheduled for the 9th, maybe what we'll do is we'll do the 11th or something that week and that'll just be a special meeting.
Okay.
I don't think there's any other commission.
Okay.
The 9th or 16th works for me.
Did we want to address the
You would still need a motion, motion on this item, correct?
I make a motion that we cancel the two regularly scheduled planning commission meetings for the month of November and December.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Okay, we have a motion by Chair Salas, seconded by Commissioner Corey.
Do we need to add the caveat that we could be called in the week of the 9th of December? Okay, perfect.
Thank you. Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Stanridge?
Yes.
Okay, motion approved.
Do we need to address the fact that our vice chair is no longer a part of the commission and we need to fill that spot? Or do we want to wait till we have everybody here?
It would have to be an agendized item, so we can bring it at a fut, at the next meeting, whether that's a special meeting or the next regular meeting, which would be in January, which at that time, we would redo the officers at that time anyway. So I don't believe that item warrants discussion at this time. I don't think there's anything else on the agenda. We don't have any departmental staff reports. I would just like to highlight what community development staff received at the city council meeting was recognition for the award that the community development department was awarded. At Arlington, Texas, Open Gov has an annual event. There are permitting software. The city of Selma stood beside city of Los Angeles, city of Santa Cruz, city of San Francisco, Colorado Springs, San Francisco International Airport as, as an agent. San Francisco International Airport as an agency that was recognized for making huge strides in providing service to its residents through permitting software. So again, I want to commend community development staff. It wouldn't be done without these two gentlemen here. It's a component of the software, the planning department page, where you can submit your permits online, plug for our online portal. But at the same time, you have these guys interacting with other departments. They interact on building permits. They interact on code enforcement. They interact on business licenses. I mean, all types of building permits, right? Solar, ADU, you know, commercial, what have you. And what they're doing is they're confirming what you guys act on, that those subsequent permits are in compliance with whatever conditions the commission sets, whatever requirements you guys add to those permits. These guys are able to very easily view, comment, tell them to revise if needed, et cetera. So at the end of the day, these guys again deserve recognition for providing exceptional customer service to the general public along with community development staff. So I couldn't be more proud to oversee that department. I think we've made huge strides in the last year and a half. I presented a bunch of statistics at the city council meeting to kind of bear that out, that we're doing more in less time since we started using the platform, which is always good. But that being said, there's always room for improvement, right? And so you have my commitment that we will never stop learning. We will never stop improving. So again, kudos to the team. End of report.
Thank you. I have been on the planning commission for two years now and have worked closely with all of you guys. And I appreciate you being there to answer questions from all the rookies here that, you know, we don't always know what we're talking about, but you keep us straight and have time to explain those things to us so that we know what we're discussing, so we don't sound dumb. So, and just getting our packets, all 500 pages stuffed in one binder is an accomplishment for Lup. So thank you very much for all your work. Anything else?
That's a lot of papers to do.
Move to adjourn.
Okay, adjourn.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thanks, Megan.
Bye, everyone.
Bye, Megan.